We are on a record.
Good evening, everyone. Today is Monday, the ninth day of November 2015. This is a scheduled caucus, scheduled for 5:30 p.m. The clock on my cellphone is showing 5:37 p.m. May I have a roll call for the commencement of this caucus? Councilperson Kajuski?
Yeah.
Councilperson Ramchell?
Yes.
Councilperson Bajiano?
Yeah.
Councilperson Young?
Yeah.
Councilperson Osborne?
Yeah.
Councilperson Coleman?
She's not here yet.
Ash, okay. Councilperson Rivera?
Yeah.
Councilperson Waterman?
Yeah.
And Council President LaVaro?
Here.
So we have eight members in attendance at 5:37 p.m. The agenda was disseminated to all the personnel on Thursday, the fifth day of November at 4:00 p.m., so I can certify through the total compliance of the Sunshine Law. I'm going to turn it over to the Council President.
Thank you, Sean. Okay, we're going to begin tonight with Mr. Magro. Resolution 10X. X as in xylophone.
And one more, Councilperson Coleman, present. So now we have all nine members.
What do you mean, 10X?
10X. 10X is a resolution authorizing a water contract with CDW Government, Inc. for consulting services for the Department of Administration Information Technology Division through the Middlesex Regional Educational Service Commission, M.R.E.S.C. Resolution 15-797.
All right, good evening, all. This contract is for consulting services related to the implementation of Cisco Voice Over IP systems. Voice over IP being telephone service over our PC network lines. We had previously contracted with CDW to do the phone systems at Linden Avenue. Now because of certain moves that are being made here in the city, those being the move of city personnel to 394 Central, moving of the Parking Authority staff into the Department of Public Safety, the need for upgraded phone service for the Bethune Center. We need the consulting services from CDW to complete all those projects.
Any questions for Mr. Magro and 10X?
Just a simple question. We pay $100,000 for the, what are they called, the Municipal Service Complex at 394 Central Avenue. Do we pay $100,000 as a consulting fee itself or does it include installation?
It includes installation and the actual programming of the telephone systems.
I see that the resolution just talked about consulting, so I wasn't feel comfortable. But this included consulting plus all the installation, so...
Yeah, it's professional services. Although it doesn't fall under the guidelines of professional services to exclude it from the bid process, it's available to us under a cooperative purchasing agreement in the state of New Jersey.
So that price is all included, right?
That is correct.
Okay. Any other questions?
Hearing none, thank you, Mr. Magro.
Thank you.
I'd like to bring up Doug Carlucci and Dennis Neuber. You guys are a team, right?
Yep. They're here for either... 3B, which is ordinance 15-153. It's an ordinance amending Chapter 254 property maintenance article nine, maintenance responsibilities of owners and managers of the city of New Jersey City Municipal Code, 3B as in boy, to mandate regular inspection requirements, fire escapes, exterior bridges, and egress balconies.
Provided a memo in the council packet, which has the basic information outlining the purpose of the ordinance. The purpose of the ordinance is to mandate property owners to have their fire escapes and egresses inspected once every five years by a structural engineer or another professional that would be adequate for Fire Official Neuber's office. The purpose of this, the immediate purpose, was we've had a few incidents with structural problems with fire escapes in the past. The most recent being on June 15th, the fire department responded to a fire at 500 Garfield Avenue where the steps of the fire escape actually collapsed while the tenants were making their way out of the building. This places the burden on the owner to have their fire escape inspected every five years. And if it's certified to be structurally adequate, then the fire division, Fire Prevention Bureau, will send, see the tag in there, they'll have that tag, and they'll be responsible for putting it on the fire escape, showing that it's been inspected in line with the ordinance.
Doug, every five years...
Is the state supposedly comes around and inspects buildings? So what is this, just a secondary inspection? Plus, one other thing. The insurance companies that, the insurance companies that cover these buildings, cover these places, are three families a morgue, I believe, Mr. Neuber? They should be the ones that are out there inspecting these fire escapes. And the state supposedly should be doing this job. So if the city comes along and does it this year, the state comes along two years from now, you know, it's like triple process.
And I understand all the questions you had are the questions I had going into this. And what we found is when the state does their inspection, they don't look at the fire escape other than a visual is a fire escape. The state inspected 500 Garfield two years prior to the fire that we had. They never asked for a structural engineer's report, nobody does. So this is an attempt to get a qualified person to certify that fire escape as safe. Right now, you'll see there's, in your packet, there's a picture of the 500 Garfield one where a family went through it and could have been killed. But there's also a picture, I have a video and I saw it and it frightened me to see it, but there was a 74-year-old superintendent just pulling down a ladder for a insurance inspection. He pulled the ladder once, pulled it twice, the 75-pound weight let loose, hit him in the head, and we see that on the video. I showed you the pictures of the weight that hit him. The fire escape in that building, we did not do an inspection on it as of yet. The building next door, we did and asked them to have it certified. It upset me because if we had gone to that building first, this gentleman would be alive. There are buildings, and look up at them, the weights are supposed to be attached to a safety bar and they hit a, if they were to release, they would hit a safety balance support. If you see something swinging, and I found three on Central Avenue, when we look for them, we find them, and it's an issue, and before somebody else gets killed, somebody gets hurt, it's just something that I feel in my job seeing it, that it's something that is definitely needed. And when we talk about a five-year report, the report only costs about $250. We went out and looked at, with some of the companies, there's two different fire escape companies that do the work, there are licensed engineers, there's not a lot involved with it, and when you go over a five-year window, $250, it's an expense granted, but it's worth it.
What's the guarantee? They're going to come along and say, oh, you need this done, this done, this done. The owner of the building doesn't know any better, and they're charging them thousands of dollars to fix stuff that really doesn't have to be fixed.
I mean, that's always the case, whenever you hire someone, so I understand.
All right.
So let me just ask you a question. If I was standing under that weight or whatever that came down and bust me in the head and I lived, who would be responsible for my medical expenses and all that kind of stuff? Would I have to pay that on my own or is the homeowner responsible if there's something wrong with his fire escape that he doesn't know about? Is he responsible for whatever happens to me under that fire escape?
Yeah, I mean, that's a lot, that's a kind of a question outside the scope of the ordinance. I mean, that would be between the property owner and the person who was injured.
The property owner, their insurance or whatever. That's what I thought. I, I, the reason I said that is because, the reason I said that is because this seems to work both ways. You know, it, the homeowner may get an expense that he has to fix something, but if he doesn't fix it, he might get a lawsuit of somebody that lives that got hit in the head with the weight. Is that correct? I mean, in other words, there's equal opportunity for, to benefit the homeowner, is that correct? Okay. I just needed to...
Councilperson Ramchell?
Once we pass this ordinance, are there going to be enough by, by inspector to go throughout citywide to inspect?
The structural engineers.
Our, yeah, our, the city personnel will be doing the inspections. It's either done by a structural engineer or somebody who is competent to do the job. I guess the question would be, are there enough people who can do that? I don't...
Well, we try to side it under the fire code when we do inspections, but remember, there are almost 8900 properties that we have not inspected, all right? And a lot of these do contain the fire escapes. So if the question is, are there enough companies that can have this work done? Yes, it's any engineer, fire escape companies. So yes, I believe that that, there may be a delay, especially if they all try to get it done at one time, but I don't see that as a major problem.
Can I ask, so you have a list of each and every one that's in violation right now?
The ones that we've found, yes.
Okay. That's it. My major concern is that, and that I come from the US side, this fire prevention, I support 100 percent, this great idea. It's about time to do that, detect of the fire escape, you know, public safety issue, but I understand the part of them. But now, reality in the street, it's a problem. As you mentioned to that, maybe two company provide those kind of fire escape inspection. Two company, we have, how many buildings actually have a fire escape in City of Jersey City? Probably thousands, thousands now. And supply and demand, more people call for the inspection, then price not going to be the way predicted, $250. Well, we can be $500,000, $600,000, $100,000 can be taken as, you know what I'm saying? So it's not, we easily say, City of Jersey is not paying, but cost will be around $250 based on your knowledge, but actually, once we pass the resolution, I mean, this ordinance, the company, two company, and another added to that, company actually, professional engineer architecture, I guaranteed, none of the engineer or architect will make a special trip, look at the fire escape examination, charge $250. I never see that, probably they charging more than $250 already, because there's a professionalism, architecture, even though they have, you know, transportation. So to me, it's cost will be small property owner, more than what you expect, what we expect. So somehow, we got to find us some way to protect, you know what I'm saying? It's a both party, you know, who are city set aside, if we only two company, we should put a bid to the public sectors.
Just, sorry. You want to...
If the concern is a big rush for everybody to start following the law, I think I would be surprised if that happened, but that's, regardless, I mean, could we, could we put something in there like, like, once the law goes into effect, it's not like immediately, like, everybody who hasn't done it gets in trouble, but there's like, they have up until the first year to get it done, so that it can kind of happen naturally, which is, I think, the point that he's trying to get at, so that we don't have a rush for everybody trying to do it at the same time.
Sure.
It's not immediate effect, they have a certain amount of time to have it done, and if they have had it inspected sometime within the last five years, then they're okay. Say if they had it inspected three years ago, they have two years to do it. To Councilman Young's point, there's, we, we, the Fire Prevention Bureau reached out to get quotes from two companies that do this work as a way to inform you of the possible cost. There are far more than two companies that are able to do this work in the region. So I don't think that the demand created by this will increase the price. All these companies compete and have competed. This is not new. This is simply just telling, this is just, this has already been if Fire Official Neuber...
The point is at once, that's the point he's making. The point he's making is, the law gets passed, wait the 20 days, and it goes into, into effect, and then everybody at the same time, there could be a huge rush. That's his concern, what you're saying.
Price also, you know what I'm saying? Because of supply and demand, and then when they company get the, like, a 20 phone call per day, usually get to one phone call per day, now 20 phone call a day, they have enough in their manpower, they have to more people, they have to go out, and the order to issue their certificate, you have to be engineer and architecture, those people, not cheap at all.
Yeah, but not to get too far on the weeds, but I think if there's a greater demand, then the supply will probably increase likewise, and it would bounce out.
You see, great demand. Not even supply, in other words, even he mentioned to the, maybe two company provide their service. So now, only two, three company, we have thousands building in Jersey City, so I am asking you that maybe we put in somewhere, you know, yeah, that you have a professionalism, maybe you can...
And I agree with your point, if you were to say, you want to buy x date, all the companies, all buildings should be certified, but with the two companies, the only reason we're using two companies is because that's all I call to get their price of what they call it.
Yeah, there are...
There are multiple companies, it's any fire escape company that's certified by the state of New Jersey to do work on fire escapes. So there are probably more than two, I don't have that number, but, and they don't have to be Jersey City companies, they could be throughout the state.
So $250 for inspection comes from the what, two-street building, three-street building? You know, not going to be having five-street building, $250, you know what I'm saying? So when you say $250, get the price from the company, how many street building actually you get $250 then?
The cost that they gave me was for a four-story building with a fire escape.
So if they charge more than $250 for a street building, we can claim that they float something, anything like that? No, I'm just kidding.
No, the purpose of quoting those two companies was simply to inform you of the possible cost that could be imposed. It's not, it's, that's not part of the ordinance, I included that just for your own information.
It just seems to be a long-term project. It doesn't seem something, something is going to be implemented tomorrow, even after we pass it. I mean, they have to be inspected once every five years. So as you go around, it's not like we're going to have, every building has a fire escape, which is not to be built, because one family, two family homes don't have fire escapes. All of a sudden, all at once, they're going to have to be...
How will they all be notified?
We can send them a letter.
So, so if you send, so if, I still, so I'm read, like, I've just reread the text, it doesn't say anything about the date. So the moment the law goes into effect, everyone, everyone's out of, quote unquote, technically is out of, is technically breaking the ordinance, right? The moment it goes into, to, into effect.
Not only that, other than...
So if you have that, and you send all those people a letter, then you potentially could have a rush. I think there could be an easy solution that says, like, within, you know, by such and such date, and that will ensure that there won't be a huge rush the day the law is passed. I think that's the point that you're, you're trying to get at.
Yes, not only that, not only that, listen, once we pass, no, no, once we pass this one, all these company go out, knocking the every buildings, listen, pass the resolution, you violate the law, you got to do inspection now, and the people don't know, most people, you know what I'm saying? So they're going to cause a huge problem, so I think we...
Actually, yeah. An entrepreneur would do that.
Sure, entrepreneur, if you're looking for money, they're going to put out their own peoples in the street, knocking the door, every building you can see a fire escape. So we got to come up more, we support your idea, but some have come out, plan to protect small property owner in Jersey City.
Amendment to put a date for an effective start date.
Yeah.
My question is, what's the $250 for, per inspection?
That's the inspection fee that the company's charged, and come out, check the joints, the connections to the building.
There's no revenue for us.
No, no, I know that, but what I'm saying is, one building, the fee is $250. So if he does 10 buildings, that's 10 times $250 that we pay?
Oh, no, no, this is, the cost is absorbed by, it's on to the property owner, who would have to do that. The city is not doing that. And if I could speak to Councilman Young's point, which it makes sense, if you put a rush on it right away, keep in mind, buildings, some of them have fire escapes out there, the one that hit the gentleman in the head was out there eight, two years, but, so there's fire escapes that are in place for 75 to 100 years that have never even been looked at until there's a problem. So if you were to say, and again, whatever timeframe you deem appropriate, it will be acceptable, if you were to say, one month to one year, at least at the end of that time date certain, these fire escapes would be checked, and it would eliminate the problem. So that, that's an open discussion that you can...
You know, put you some kind of gray spear time, you know, we working on it, because you did a great job.
Do we have dates?
Yes.
Do you want a year, December 31st, 2016?
Yeah, I think that's one year's period.
Yeah, one year's period.
Okay, I, I have no problem with that.
People will be inspected no later than December 31st, 2016?
Yep.
Something like that.
And if people haven't taken the initiative to do it by then, after they've gotten a letter, and there is a rush on demand at the last minute, that's kind of on them.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know if the tax collector will do that, but she does send out an annual notice in June, and maybe she can add that to the notice, or it can be an insert in that annual notice to property owners.
Yeah, we'll do that, that's, that's probably the best way to do it. And just as a final point, this isn't unprecedented, it's a state law in Massachusetts that we mirrored this on there. Massachusetts, it's actually every three years, we decided to go every five years because we felt there would be a negligible difference between the two. Additionally, sorry, go ahead, Councilman.
When we sent the letters... We got to mention to them, that company who inspect the fire escape, the company qualified, able to issue the certificate, something, you know what I'm saying? Other than that, X, Y, Z, A, B, C, all the company come out, act like...
Recommend the company, yeah.
No, we not recommend, but actually, when you, you know, what are they called, the exam of fire escape, they must take a company who has able to issue some kind of certificate or so on, so, something we have to educate our consumer, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, well, they have to be certified by the state to do the work.
Whatever, you know what I'm saying?
And then they're responsible for filing an affidavit with Fire Prevention Bureau, saying that they have done the inspection and that the structure has passed inspection.
Oh, we got it, but the certification is not ball of the, you know what I'm saying? We don't want to hear that.
I mean, it's kind of caveat, you still have to make sure that the person has the proper certificate to do the work.
It's going to be amended for tomorrow for consideration.
So my only, my only request is, in terms of the notices, if you would just send, provide the council a memo saying how notices will be executed. I know Joanne suggested that the tax collector, whether it's your office, tax collector, doesn't matter to me, just let us know how it's being done.
From Fire Prevention, we'll send it out via the tax...
Well, it'd be cheaper if you do it with the tax collector.
Well, that's what I'm saying, it'll be a letter from Fire Prevention in the mailing of the tax collector.
Just want something in writing.
Approximately price, Joey? Approximately price per inspection, like a four-story building, $250. So people at least knows that, the guys come up, $1,000, $2,000, somehow, yes, yeah, improper?
Yeah, because each company is different.
Okay, any other questions? Councilperson Coleman?
The only amendment to this is giving it until December...
December 31st.
Okay. Move forward, please. Thank you. All right, thank you. Okay, move on, next item? Can we bring up Carmen?
Okay.
For Resolution 15.799, which is 10Z, 10Z, which is, resolution authorizing amendment to a contract with Mullen and Loughran Associates for providing services in connection with the preparation of the city, the city's five-year tax consolidation plan for 2015-2019, the annual action plan, and update of the city's analysis of the implements, of a, sorry, to a fair housing plan. Folks, can we get your attention? We have Director Gandula here?
Yes, 10Z.
10Z.
So I'm presenting a contract amendment to what we currently have with professional
services with, for our office. That's what's being presented, I don't know if you guys have any additional questions in regards to what we're looking to do, or ideally, we're in contact right now with Mullen and Loughran, and in regards to the cleanups that we've had to do in my office, these additional services are needed. And some of you may, may not know, right, we had an audit that, right, that we have to work on in addressing, and being a little bit more proactive in regards to addressing the needs that need to be changed in community development.
I didn't hear, you speak slower than I speak. I'm a slow listener, so can you, can you tell me again?
Okay, so, what would you like?
Gee, I should, this one, I should.
Okay.
This one's all... I normally do that at council meetings, I didn't expect it to be... At a caucus, but can we all silence our cell phones? They're silenced. Thank you.
Are you sure?
And we need to set the example, not beat the example.
Right.
Too shit, Councilman.
So, again, what's presented to you is a contract amendment, reextension in regards to some of the services that we already started to do, and ideally, if you identify things in community development, when we contracted with them, upon the surface of review, when we're trying to clean things up, cleaning projects up from 20 years ago. Do it again?
I want to know who that is checking.
Give me, give me. It's the mayor.
I don't know who this is for.
Obviously.
All right, let's go.
Wait, wait, are we okay?
Yeah, that's it, I'm not going to do it again.
Okay, so you have some things that you need to do.
Yeah, some things, I mean, I...
And you were cleaning them up, and you're asking us to approve an extension?
Mm-hmm, for $25,000 to continue in doing the work that we already started out to do. We just, we ran out of funds in regards to the first aspect of it, and ideally, some of the things that we're going to be working on is the audit, some manuals that we're trying to produce out, some of the things that we're just trying to clean up in our office, and, yeah, and, you know, the, for instance, the annex in regards to that project, that amendment, and ideally, in reality, speaking, we had three people in my office that, like, the previous director retired or left, retired, the assistant left, and the assistant director left. And ideally, when I looked at, last year, we paid out, the assistant director, as a consultant, we paid her out $15,000 for a year, and there was errors in the process of what people were doing. So now I'm leaning on the services of a professional firm to help guide us through it, and so, I think we got them for a bargain.
Okay, any questions? No, they need it.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, and just to let you guys know that we're, I'm putting out the RFP again for fiscal '16 for applications, so you'll be getting emails from me in regards to what we're doing right back again soon.
Thank you. Roddy? Roddy Hurston?
Good afternoon. This is in reference...
10J, J is Jack.
Community Development worked with real estate Anne Marie in auctioning off a property, 268 Fairmont, that the city owned, that was deed restricted. We had one successful bidder on the property, they are, they presented a check for $40,000, they have two months to pay the balance of $145,000. The property will be deed restricted through 2034, and at some point, we'll come back for approval on an assumption agreement for the new developer to, to assume the restrictions on the property. And so this will put seven units back into use and on the tax roll.
Folks, any questions?
Hearing none, thank you.
Resolution 10J.
10J. 10J.
Property not needed for public use, held on Thursday, October 29, 2015.
Thank you, Roddy. Jeff? You have a question?
Oh, Roddy, Roddy, one second.
Does a staple, the purchase property?
The lead associate told us...
Okay.
Jeff, I'd like to ask some questions. Folks, Jeff, last night I received a call from a young lady in the Heights concerning the Central Avenue redevelopment, and she sent me a copy of it, all right, which I knew nothing about. Then I got another call from another young lady in the Heights, and she told me that you people met with the RNA and the Washington Park Association. I know nothing about this, and I'm telling you, and you can tell Bob Carter, anything that affects my ward or his ward, now, he knew about it, but it affects me, I want to know about. It's embarrassing to have people call me and tell me what's going on when I don't know about it. And I'm telling you, don't let it happen again, because there's going to be out and out screaming. All right, Jeff?
But actually, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. Yeah. I have a special item, 3I, which is City Ordinance... 15-160, it's an ordinance of the municipal council of the city of Jersey City.
I'm sorry, 3I.
3I, adopting amendments to the Henderson Street South redevelopment plan, modify the duration of the plan. Jeff?
So, this amendment will... This is, first off, this is the Henderson Street South redevelopment plan. This is an old plan from 1975, and it includes that block of Laurel Court, those two little cul-de-sac areas on that one block with the...
Your old, your stopping rights, yes.
So, it's just that block and a portion of another that is in this redevelopment plan. There's been some interest in the community there, and they've had a couple of community meetings about making some changes to the plan. And in looking at the plan, it has expired, and it's not clear in the state statute how to deal with an expired plan. In fact, the state redevelopment law does not contemplate plan expiration at all. So, to have a clear way forward, we are proposing first, an amendment just to delete the expiration date of the plan. And that will clarify that it's an active plan, and the state statute provides for how to amend a redevelopment plan. There's nothing in the state statute that contemplates how to deal with expired plans. So, we believe that by deleting the expiration date, it'll actually bring the redevelopment plan into better compliance with state law.
Thank you. There's been, there's private interest in certain portions of this land, a developer wanting to, that has agreements with several people, to do something on one portion of the land, but not like a block away. And so, it's important to me that the city look at this from what's good from the city's perspective, not from the interest of one developer who has an interest in doing one thing. I can tell you that if we get a redevelopment plan change for this, and it's the one block, that's the one developers ask, it's not gonna be a good thing. I wanna look at that entire block as a whole and do the right thing for the entire block. And maybe we should initiate it regardless of anything else outside of what a developer asks, because it's creating a situation where neighbors are feeling pitted against other neighbors, and, hey, if I can't put these 10 homeowners together, I'll go get these other 10 homeowners, and I don't like it. So I think we should look at it holistically, what does the city want, and do it from that perspective.
This is, came out of the meeting that we had with them at St. Mary's, and the idea of taking that approach.
Yes.
Yep. Any other questions?
I read part of that redevelopment thing. The word condemnation is in there. Take it out. Because condemnation means nothing short of eminent domain. If you're gonna fool around with the people up in Ward C and Ward D using words like that, there's gonna be a lot of problems. And one other thing, Jeff, I got calls today from a couple of people that are building an eight, they wanna get approval for an eight-story building down by Van Ripen, and I think it's Van Ripen and Tunnelley. And the people just got noticed on Thursday and Friday. Isn't it, aren't they supposed to be notified 10 days in advance?
Because we post them on 10 days.
Well, the letters aren't. I want it pulled tomorrow night from the planning board, okay?
Which would try to be what for?
Van Ripen, he knows who it is.
This is Planning Board agenda.
Since we're doing that, how's the MLK redevelopment plan?
We actually are close to having a draft ready, and we're still working with the redevelopment agency on just the hub piece. And I think we got a lot, got a lot to show you.
You wanna chime in on Ocean Avenue?
That will be on the planning board tomorrow night.
There are some questions or concerns about whether... Yeah, the plan. Jeff, there are some questions and concerns from South Greenville about whether it incorporates their visioning ideas that were floated from their visioning sessions and so forth. And I guess they've taken, I haven't reviewed it, Frank may have already, but it seems to be that there's suggestions that it does not necessarily, that some things have not been contemplated from the visioning session. Terms of height, what was the other thing, Peter?
Bars. Right. I had gotten a letter from Martha Larkin. She's the president of the Neighborhood Association, and she said that there was some divide among her membership about some of those issues, and that not everyone was in agreement on it. But she did make us aware that there were people who were not in agreement with all of it.
I'm not beating them up, I'm just kidding. But actually, I think I would better keep the record straight. Our old council members should be aware, the central N S I D get a lot of complaint from the neighbor, the neighbor, commercial district is not upgraded, they have like no decent stories, so many 99 cents, all kind of complaint there. So, central N S I D actually looking for some kind of improved plan for the, you know, commercial district. So, they turned to with a marketing company. They also contacted with that, you know, most professional, they have, you know, development, it's a planning. They contacted with you guys, asked some suggestion. So, they draft to come up some kind, as they are all, as a planning department, they come up redevelopment plan. Their plan not even, I'm gonna make it clear, at the meeting, you heard that, as a councilman, Michael, I'm not gonna support any redevelopment plan without support by community leaders. But somehow, some people create your propaganda, tell the councilman attend the meeting, he's supporting and he proved it. God bless. You know what I'm saying? So, those kind rumors out there, and they plant the propaganda go outside. But as you know, as I attend the meeting, it was not. I say very clear. So, the central N S I D, they put efforts, you know, then you guys give us some item, plan to discuss among themselves. After they discuss, as you say, as he say, it contaminating. If people don't want it, then at the plan draft, they can delete it. If they already council, Michael, approved the 14th Street buildings, it's not true. If people, 14th Street too high, they want to fire 4th Street, then amend to 4th Street, there can be something discussed. Then you guys provide the material to discuss. But somehow, out there, people has a different ambitions, create a propaganda that make you guys, that make me, you know what I'm saying? It's not fair to some people. As a councilman, if any organization invited me, I have to attend it, you know? Anybody has the same problem. We attend it means we not prove, you know, we not supporting. But somehow, out there, the rumors going around, so you ready for that? And always want to, we can say that, as long as the council, my opinion here, council, without any redevelopment, without minister support, we're not gonna be supporting, okay? So make it clear that part of it, okay?
Yeah, and also, I'd like to know, and so would Michael, if these meetings go on, we wanna know about it, okay?
Yeah.
It's embarrassing to have people call you, and you go, what are you talking about? All right?
Understood. The work that the planning division did do was at the request of the Central Avenue Sid, just to kinda have something to discuss. That redevelopment plan, or proposed plan, isn't even scheduled before the planning board yet, and it's really just out there to kick off discussion about it. So, there is no schedule at this time to move that plan forward. We just did some work for the Central Avenue Sid at their request to kinda put something together to start the discussion, and that's where we're at.
You go by the professional documentation, so they're gonna discuss with community leaders. So even though you get beat up by some guy who make rumors, don't pay attention too much. Do your job. Thank you for, you know, your effort, you know? I willing to stand with you. You not proved anything, we not prove anything, okay? You're a nice guy.
Do me a favor, pull that, pull that Van Ripen project.
All right. Who's next? Jeff is done. We have Brooke.
You still wanna talk on the resolution for competitive contracting?
Yes, I didn't see you.
I'm not so lucky, you know, with ideas.
I'm here on behalf of Director Redfield. We just have two basic resolutions. One is for the Division of Building and Streets. This is the final renewal of a contract for the purchase of various materials for building and streets.
10V.
10V.
V is indexer.
And then 10W is a contract for our Parks Division for the purchase of garbage bags for our parks.
She's Resolution 15-795, Resolution authorizing the renewal of an open-ed contract with Bayway, Bayway, excuse me, lumber, for the supply and delivery of lumber and assorted materials for the Department of Public Works, Division of Building and Streets Maintenance. And she's also here for 10W, which is Resolution 15-796, Resolution authorizing award of an open-ed contract to Goldfleck Corporation to supply and deliver large black plastic garbage bags for the Department of Public Works, Division of Park Maintenance. And we'll take them one at a time. Brooke, you're on for 10V.
Pretty straightforward. Did anyone have any questions?
Any questions on 10V? Okay, any questions on 10W? If you have anything else?
Yes, I'm also here for Brian Weller for 10T.
T, isn't Tom?
10T.
Yes, and this is for HVAC systems, or our automotive department.
10C is Resolution 15-793, it's Resolution authorizing award of a contract to Jersey State Controls for upgrades, modifications to the HVAC system in the auto shop building at the Municipal Service Complex, 1315 London Avenue East, project number 2015-01125, for the Department of Administration, Division of Architecture, Engineering, Traffic and Transportation. Okay, Brooke?
Any questions?
Yes. I think, maybe I missed this the last time. We had the issue with this, the original install of the air conditioning system.
Two different things. I think the last time, there was issue with the bases on the roof for the entire building. But this is for specific to the auto garage area. Apparently, when it was specked out, some louvers that were supposed to be included in the spec, that weren't. So now the ventilation of the air is not going around properly. Therefore, now with the winter months, and now the garage being closed, the fumes are building up in the garage. We need to be able to vent it out. So, this was not specked out in the original plans. This is the, to rectify that situation.
But the install, they say from the original install of the air conditioning unit, is the same company gonna do that there?
I don't think it's the same company.
But they, the resolution, they say it's the same company, so my scratch hat, this council not happy with their first install of that air conditioning system.
Was it specked out the first time, so they... They installed what was specked out. What's being specked out here should have been in the original plan and was not. So it wasn't the fault of the vendor, it was the fault of whoever designed it.
Because he did what he was supposed to do according to the specs.
That is right. Councilman Rob Schaub?
That was my question, because I know we did talk about that a couple of meetings.
That was the issue on the roof. Yeah, for the whole air quality.
Okay, any other questions?
Nope.
Okay, Brooke, thank you. Okay, Mr. Platt?
Hello. Here for 10S. It's a Resolution authorizing competitive contracting for consulting services to revise the business permitting and licensing process. I don't think I got that word for word.
It's 10S, Resolution 15-792.
Now, so, one of the challenges that we are uncovering that small businesses facing Jersey City is a cumbersome and very disjointed permitting process. So you, you know, it's paper-based, you have to go to many different people in many different departments. No one tells you if it's right, or where the progress is, or if you have to go somewhere else to do another piece of it. Everything's very siloed. So, we also understand that we have limitations as far as our expertise and experience in improving this process. So, we're looking to hire a consultant covered under the grant dollars, so it's not costing taxpayers anything, to have somebody who, we've actually already found a few companies that do this every day for a lot of different cities, streamlining the permitting process, moving it to an electronic system, yes.
So, there's the overall permitting process, which I'm sure is flawed just because of time and it's a paper process. But there's a specific piece of the process that many, that I've heard is the worst offender, if you will, from a small business perspective, which is in the Buildings Department, understanding, do I need to do this, that, or the other? Somebody comes, they tell me these three things, then they come back, and I fix those three things, and there's four other things, and I fix that, and then somebody doesn't... Two sessions get canceled, and then I have to reschedule. Is it gonna address all of that?
Yeah, we're hoping it does.
I mean, that should be the top focus of this, I guess, is my point.
Actually, I tried to say that they're same things, you know what I'm saying? Because there was some improvement we have that we understand, because now they use a tablet, so more handwriting is readable than before. Thank you for that. Your effort for the improved part of it. But second thing is this one, exactly same where the complaints still today, you know what I'm saying? But not only that, the Building Department, the whole processing actually, people wanna open the business. Now, they scratch their study hat, where they get their signed permit, where have to get their food license. So now, this company, what do they do? They provide the software, or just they're gonna to leave service, how we should do?
Well, so it's separate. The actual software wizard, as we envision it, and we don't know for sure what it's gonna look like, but it would be, you know, you go to an online tool, and it tells you exactly what you need and how you need to do it. So, are you serving alcohol? Yes, fill out this form online, in the same flow of permit. Are you serving food outside in a sidewalk cafe? Yes, you have to fill out this form. All done online. The consultant we're hiring now is gonna tell us exactly the pieces of the puzzle that we need and where to put them, and to help us improve the things such as, you know, what's going on in the Building Department they're getting complaints on, and all the other complaints we're getting. The actual piece of software will have to be separate, just that's the way procurement works, that we can't have a consultant tell us what to do, and then also give us, it's too many different things, so.
Coleman? So, these guys are sort of like fix-its, right? They're gonna do a workflow analysis to watch the whole flow of the process, and then they're going to consolidate or eliminate or whatever, and then they're gonna recommend a software package that would be able to take this online. Is that what you...
Yeah, even though they recommend software, we're gonna do, we have to do separate...
Separate RFP for the software anyway, so.
Write the specification, score the software.
Yeah, yeah, right.
So, I don't know if we can have, like, people, like, reviewing the recommendations outside of city government, but if we could, I would suggest maybe some people who've gone through the process, number one. And then, number two, Zahara, who owns Indy Grove, used to run the small business facilitation. She started it for New York City, and she did it for like 10 years before she came and opened up her own business in Jersey City. So she might be a good resource, as a civic, you know, responsibility to maybe give some advice and guidance there, given that she's done it before.
Yeah, absolutely. We very engaged with a large number of small businesses in the process, and, you know, we've interviewed them, we've had them take surveys, and, you know, we're trying to keep the public as engaged as possible. We want to ensure that the businesses are driving our direction, not us as some office in City Hall telling the businesses what they need. So that's the way we're approaching it.
Okay, Brian, I'm just wanna make sure that we all knows our problem. You know them more than anybody else, we know all our problem. But now, I hope this consulting include find out software too, you know what I'm saying? Because if this company say so and so, you have the problem, but now separately, if you guys decide the software, maybe their software not gonna provide problem he lined up, you know what I'm saying? So, that company, consulting company job must have to have to provide recommendation, certain software, based on their study, research. Other than that, what they research and what we selected program can be different.
Could be custom design software?
Yes.
It might, you know what I'm saying? Might be, well, not, you know what I'm saying?
Well, the only, the only concern I would have there is you could have a conflict of interest in the recommendation. So I think we should tread lightly there.
They write the specification of the software, and then people have opportunity to bid on that.
Whatever, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah. The requirements.
I don't want you that they report, and the software can, two different, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, they should have to provide the requirements.
Right.
So, what about the events process? It's sort of like the same thing as this permit thing. So, when you're looking into this process, is it possible that you combine events with this? Because all of it is a process... events with, with this? Because all of it is, is a process to get something done.
Yeah.
It took me seven weeks to get an authorization because a nonprofit came to me and said, I can't do this. It took seven weeks for the councilwoman to do it, and I went in, you know, without any appointments and everything, said I'm Councilwoman Coleman, and I went to nine places. It took me seven weeks. So is it possible that we have a couple of things like that?
Yeah.
That they look at all of those things, you know?
I, I think, I think we do have options when we, when we do the software RFP, uh, as just a, like, it, it's included as a permit, uh, an, an event. So I think, I think we do. I can't, I can't make any promises, uh, but we will very much try. And I'm not sure if the software will do. I'm, I'm assuming it does, but I can't make any promises at this point.
This, um, contract, um, consultant, make that assessment of that, that piece, the event.
This will not assess the, the events process, but I don't think it's as complex as, as business licensing permits. I don't, I don't.
We streamline everything. Under Cultural Affairs, you're supposed to submit one form. So if that's not happening, if it wasn't, and don't know when you did it, but that was like within the last few months or so?
Yeah.
So maybe, maybe you were on the tail end of the old process, but you're now supposed to be able to send one form to Cultural Affairs, so that problem should be mostly resolved.
Thing on this is, uh, we talked about it a little bit, um, inside of business licensing and permitting, when we talk about, uh, the, the different planning applications and approvals, uh, whether it be forgetting a variance, forgetting a redevelopment plan change, is that incorporated as part of this assessment? And will that be part of the report recommendations? And there's been talk about the idea of getting that more transparent?
Yeah.
And people being able to see kind of where the, where they are in the process.
Yeah, so a couple of things there. So, uh, even though we're calling it an assessment of business licensing and permitting, you know, construction is construction. It doesn't matter if it's a business or residence. And so this will streamline that process either way. So it will benefit residents. It'll benefit anyone going through any of these processes.
They will look at that particular piece of the process, that will planning division?
Yes, yes, 'cause that is, yeah, and we've, and we've met with representatives from H E D C already, and, and everyone's on board to, to move forward with this. And, and, and yes, it will, it will include everything it takes. We want it to be a one, literally a one-stop shop. So you go to one website and you fill it out in one spot and, you know, yeah.
That you can just write into the software requirements. Must take electronic versions of the plan, so that I never get a phone call ever again of, oops, we lost the plan. Ever, ever again. It's gonna be uploaded in the cloud and never loseable.
Absolutely. This, this is a, this is also, I just wanna, uh, let everyone know, it's, it's a long-term thing. The consultant will take a few months. The RFP for the software will take a few months. So we're not gonna have it ready in two weeks. I just wanted to manage expectations a little bit.
When will the RFP, when will the, whoever gets the R, the bid?
Yeah.
Be expected to produce a report? Is there a report, I assume, that's a final product? Recommendations?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, it, it, that's gonna be a long process too. They have to go to every department and division and, and look through and, and monitor and watch it and observe it. Uh, it's, it's probably, you know, a, a few months. Uh, yeah, it's probably a little later than that. We'll probably have a, a vendor awarded by, uh, maybe January, maybe late December, January, and then it'll probably be, uh, mid to late spring. Yeah, thank you. For the people. No further questions.
Yep. That's plenty of, thank you.
From the top.
Okay, um, let's, there's no one else here from the city, right?
Yeah.
Okay, from the top.
Yeah. I'm not gonna read the first reading into the records. Uh, any questions on items three A through three K?
Let's do them one at a time.
Yeah, so three A is an amendment to the police off-duty ordinance.
Folks.
There are two changes being recommended. If you remember, when this was done in two thousand thirteen, uh, the police, uh, Public Safety Director came and asked to increase the fees to allow for the coverage of the supervisors for the off-duty program. And, and, right, and, and, and the, and the thought process was that the increase in fees would cover the supervisor costs. Well, during the budget process, you know, we delved into it a little deeper and found out that it was not covering the cost of the supervisors. We were actually taking a loss. The taxpayers were taking a loss on the program. So this ordinance is asking two things. One, to increase the, the administrative fee from eight dollars an hour to twelve dollars an hour. And also, there was a, a ratio there of one supervisor for every twelve officers. We're asking to change that to one for every twenty officers. So it'll be less supervisors, we believe, uh, are needed on the tours for off-duty as opposed to on-duty.
Questions?
No vote. Yes, it will definitely cover.
Councilman Juski?
The meeting was on the agenda, it got pulled?
It got pulled. Yeah, we pulled it, 'cause the unions wanted to meet with us before. We have not, we're meeting with them Thursday. I just was not gonna hold it any longer. Uh, now that I put it on the agenda again, now suddenly they wanted to meet. So I just like to leave it on and we'll, we'll meet with them. I don't know what they're, I don't, exactly, exact. We pulled it, we, we didn't meet, so now it's on, we're meeting. And it's just for introduction at this point. Yes, sir.
I understand that my concern is that they charge, like, a large event or a small event, they charge fifty-five dollars an hour, small event, plus add to another twelve dollars, is that right? Then will be sixty-seven dollars?
Per hour.
Per hour. Whole lot of money, really, I'm telling you. In a small, non-profit organization, well, private organization, but it doesn't matter actually, to try to some, bring up some good things in the city of Jersey City, what the neighbor, and if you have to pay sixty-seven dollars an hour, and the most event for ten hours, six hundred seventy dollars, actually, you know, somewhere is a whole lot of money, really. You know, and especially senior fixed income, break the side work, try fix the side work, you know, it's, I can say that maybe, you know, police officer maybe hates to hear that, but when you pay, how much you have to pay to break the side work?
Four hundred dollars, I guess.
Here you go.
Yeah.
Fifty dollars, almost sixty, sixty-two dollars an hour have to be paid for, you know?
So I think you, you're, there's a agreement to do on that. So I recall from a previous meeting when this was contemplated, discussed, we talked about the little old lady who came to our meeting, and that we would have put some sort of, um, exemption for certain income situations.
We pay sixteen hundred dollars for same jobs for a car.
For four days. I mean, it takes away a lot of money from this.
If I may just suggest, because this is really, Bob is doing this because we had a budget issue in this regard. We can move this, and then, and then also begin to move on some of these questions of, um, addressing the
Exemption.
Fixed income situations, low-income folks, nonprofits and certain organizations and other things.
Safe cushion for them, protect the people of Jersey City.
Right. Those are very valid points, and I think, speaking from the, uh, the police department side, there would be a fear that the jobs that you're talking about may not be manned. So you would have to include some sort of language requiring, and I guess, not to skip a tour, skip one of these type of positions that are cheaper than the other more, you know, alluring jobs. So definitely do language to make sure nothing gets, you know, skipped.
Councilperson, I want?
Yeah, I mean, I have, my opinion that might differ from other people, and that, you know, I got off the path train every day in Manhattan and saw plenty of jobs where it's smaller things where there were, there weren't any police. Uh, but there were police on bigger, more busy roads, and, and having some type of prioritization. I would just say that we shouldn't, the, the decision we make should be based on public safety, not on somebody's income level. So if, if, if we're, if we require a police officer to be there for public safety, and we believe it's a public safety issue, it's a public safety issue no matter how much income the person has who's doing the work. Um, and if, if it, they either need to be there or they don't need to be there. And I think, um, we should.
Or they can be there without charging the little lady.
Right.
That, that, that's fine, but, but, but I guess maybe I'm saying the same thing as, as Bob there, but, um, we need to make su, if it's a public safety issue, it's a public safety issue.
Yeah, but I don't think we're saying the same thing, because it depends on where at in Jersey City, that, that this is happening, that there are low-income or fixed-income people more in certain areas of Jersey City than other areas. I think it should be like, uh, senior discount, like you have snow shovel for seniors or, or disabled people or whatever. I think it should be something based on that, because public safety, like Candace said, is public safety. There needs to be a police officer there. But if the person's gonna use her whole social security check to pay a police officer, then there should be some kind of sliding rate. Yes, that's what I'm saying. So it should.
Her, her oil tech excavated, was required by law to have a police officer there while it was going on.
Yes, it took her whole.
She'd be charged forty dollars a day.
Yes, that's, and I, and that's what we said. I think there should be.
Join, in the BA? We have to look at it this way. Break the side work, you know, especially Main Street, yes, have issue, the public safety issue, but somewhere quite neighborhood.
Side street, yes.
Side street, break side work, and not much cause that much problem. We have to give the choice to the property owner, to hire a police officer while crossing guard. We have to give some kind of choice, because it's not that much at issue, you know what I'm saying?
The council, the area, and it's valid. Uh, that's another issue for, you know, maybe look into this a bit more in detail. Uh, this ordinance only has one purpose right now, to address the losses we're taking. You know, if we wanna look at, you know, the staffing and the prices, you know, we have to have maybe like a little committee, maybe talk about it, make sure we address everyone's, uh, concerns. Another amendment.
Maybe then they come up, I do already rush.
They're still gonna, they're gonna work their jobs. There'll be no reason for them to come to the table, 'cause they're getting their money. We'll be losing ours.
All right, okay.
Okay, three C? It's an ordinance, uh, supplementing chapter one oh two.
Jersey City Boulevard, right at the, this is right behind, uh, right by Liberty Main and, and Liberty Science Center. They, you have any coming down, uh, the turnpike, right there? They wanna make a four-way stop there, right by Liberty Main, the Science Center, and the turnpike. Yeah, that's right.
Oh, City Science. I mean, the city, they gotta put up the signs. Three D?
It's meter parking.
Yeah, I guess I'll take this. Uh, I was hoping Mary would be here from the Parking Authority.
Oh, yeah, where is she?
Mary, uh.
Oh, okay. So I, I can address it, though. Um, both of these ordinances are, were prepared to simply codify what the Parking Authority did when they were an independent authority, which is they had meters in their then Parking Authority-owned lots. Now those lots have become the city lots, and the ordinance needs to be amended, because the city now has to authorize the meters in those lots, and it was not done before. Um, and on E, that, uh, the Parking Authority was, pardon? Yes, three, D and E are both related to, um, codifying some practices of the Parking Authority that now that the Parking Authority was disbanded, and now the city owns these lots, and the city controls these functions, these items have to be in the city code. One is to, uh, the installation of meters in the private parking lots, off-street parking lots that are now owned by the city. Those meters have to be authorized by ordinance. And the, uh, E are permit parking. Uh, there are a whole series of residential parking permits, or permits that are allowed in residential parking areas, um, for construction contractors and, uh, home health aides, and a whole series of, uh, people, um, who need to be treated specially in the residential parking areas. And they also have been charging fees. Now, the Parking Authority did this before by resolution. It did it by their board. But again, now that the Parking Authority no longer exists, um, actually, it should have always been done by the city, but in any event, it wasn't. We discovered this through the, when the Parking Authority was disbanded. So this also needs to be now put in the code. We eliminated the, um, the ordinance that the council withdrew or defeated.
Defeated last meeting.
Had to do with the extending the hours of the residential. That is no longer in this ordinance. We took that out.
So it does, this essentially helps a lot with, the, the last time we introduced the contractor stuff, it didn't have specifics on the size. And so you had contractors in big buildings that could get street parking for, essentially for free. So this removes a lot, except for one, two-family homes, which is good, because we don't wanna pass on to small homeowners. We don't wanna have unintended consequence of them not renovating their home, because now all of a sudden they have to pay hundreds and hundreds of dollars in parking fees.
And there was one other thing in E, reminded me of the, on the residential parking permit, there was one side of Mercelli Street, I think, I forget the, it was in one of the zones, and student, that was it. So they picked that up for, and they had been issuing permits, but in fact, the, it wasn't in the city ordinance. So that's just corrected. Lot of cleanup.
Okay, any questions? Councilman Ramshell?
So, um, I have a question for this, um, 'cause in my ward, there's two city on Park, on West Side Avenue. And, um, one on Duncan, and one on the corner of Condeney, of course, by Derek Green. Uh, I wish the director was here. I thought she would be here, and I don't wanna.
She has pneumonia.
Yeah, all right. Sorry about that. But they, they, they've been ticketing, um, they've been ticketing the one across by Duncan. There's no sign in the lot, and it's filthy, and, um, they, the people, now the fine fare open up there, and then you have two stores there. And they've been booting people in the lot, and the signs is not there. People going to do grocery, park a car there, and.
Can you take care of that?
Yes.
Yeah, so which lot is the?
So lot maintenance?
Lot maintenance, um.
Signage?
Signage. Yeah. And if we could, uh, instead of seven o'clock, can we made it, make it eight o'clock?
That's a ordinance.
Well, that, you'd have to have a whole other ordinance. We can do it, but it's not.
Yeah, can we, can we, I mean, I would like to switch the time in my, in, on West Side.
Make the ordinance, meters?
The meat, no, yeah, from eight o'clock, where the zone, where the, because you have people paid for, to park there, right? Permit parking.
Yeah, you, you should get, I think the best to get the, the language of the law on that one, and then you can take a look at it.
Right.
Make sure you're putting.
If I can, okay, yeah, because I wanna change that up a little bit. Because now we got two stores there. Before, there was no stores there. And seeing that we have the city lot there that is meter, it should be, we should be able to allow this to park there and go to the goods. People get out of work at five o'clock, they go to the grocery store. There's nowhere to park.
Maybe the director just needs to weigh in on that as well, because it's an enforcement issue. If you extend the hours and there's no one out there to enforce, I don't know where that gets you, but.
Yeah, they're working, because they go there, issue ticket, I mean, there's no sign.
Well, we, we meet with the director, which is well.
Yeah, if we can, yeah, okay. Thank you, that's.
But the, the other stuff on maintenance and signage issues can be addressed.
Okay.
Join?
So this one, actually, I have some concern, you know, that issued for non-residential parking. And I had some numerous complaints, really, small property on Central Avenue. They own the building, they pay property of Jersey City, but they not live here, you know, so they live out of town, Union City or somewhere. Now, when they come in to park the car, they can like get the residential parking. You know, they pay property, they own the building, you know? So they have to pay three hundred dollars per year, even though they pay taxes in City of Jersey City. You know, somehow, when the three hundred dollars, you can get it as nothing, but also, the small business community and employees especially, now they not make whole lot of money. They make maybe fifteen thousand, twenty thousand dollars a year, so part-time working. They have to bring up the car, they have three hundred dollars a lot of money for them, you know?
Do they have employee, uh, I don't know what they charge for that?
Do they have a special employee?
They do, but it's, it's, but it's, I think it is about three hundred.
Thirty dollars.
Every six months, I think.
Every six months. So small, like apartheid people, make fifteen thousand, twenty thousand dollars, that's a lot of money. And especially, small property owners, they own the property, they pay property tax in City of Jersey, but they cannot park the car, you know, those are the.
Yeah, but, and, we should, we should talk about that, 'cause the residents are gonna have a huge problem with non-residents.
That's the dilemma.
Yeah.
The residents want the parking, and then the non-residents wanna come in there and want to.
Yeah, the, the residents would have a huge problem with us.
But we have to understand.
They want us to increase. The residents very clearly want us to increase the non-resident parking fee, not decrease it.
All right, next. Okay.
Franchise ordinance?
Any questions?
You feel free to, to recommend that we decrease to fifteen dollars for non-residents. Put up the ordinance.
No, for the, honor for that to be, you say...
Feel free, I'm not gonna do it.
Alright, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Henry, none on 3F, 3G. 3H. 3I, we touched on...
3F, 3F, 3F.
3F.
3F, going back.
Well...
That's okay, franchise ordinance.
I know you sent me a note on it, but Andrea, can you come up and explain it?
So, sure, certainly, Paul's hearing, can you record that?
This franchise ordinance is for private residents. It is part of a renovation that my client is making at his house on Sussex Street. The purpose is to have permission to have a new fence there, a decorative fence in front of his, his, it's an old historical building that's next to, I don't know if that's John's Pizza's there, or... Satis is on the corner.
Yeah.
So, the fence is designed to be in alignment with all of the other fences along Sussex Street. So, you know, that's, we did go to Historic Preservation Commission, and it was, you know, was approved subject to making this application to the board, to the council.
Isn't that something that should go to zoning? Because there's so many people within the city that want to put up fences, you know, around their property, and think we're the guys that are gonna, should say, yes, you could do it, or you can't do it.
And actually, this is, this is the proper play, we went to Historic Preservation Commission for that reason, to present it, and they approved it, and it's subject to the council. The council is the body that can approve this.
Because it's coming on the public right-of-way.
You could use the public right-of-way. Sorry, this is in my ward. So, one, has the neighborhood, has anybody met with the Neighborhood Association, Historic Politic Neighborhood Association on this?
I believe they have.
I can't say for sure, I think, I think my client is Mr. Schuster, I believe he has met with them, he's very active in the neighborhood.
Yeah, this, this is, this is, I need a hundred percent confirmation that... And when I look at it, there's my gut reaction, and that's why, that's why I want, I'd like to hear kind of the Neighborhood Association's advice and guidance on this. When I look at it, like, my gut reaction says, so we're gonna take public sidewalk and give it to somebody so they can have more space in front of their house to put a fence around? That's what it looks like to me.
That's what it sounds like to me, too.
What it is, you know, your client and the Neighborhood Association to find out what conversations they've had. Yet, this, this area of Sussex Street is a little unique in that the, the building ends here, and then the property line is out here.
Yep.
So, then the fence lines go down the street, so that's what we're trying to do, is just to mimic the fence line down the street. Then you have two commercial properties to, to the west. So, you know, I think part of the reason is to, to kind of separate the residential from the commercial, and then to maintain that, that line, that you'll have outdoor cafes to the west also. So, the sidewalk, yeah, that's, that's what it is. So we're maintaining the sidewalk area down the street.
So, I understand the rationale, but I would really like to hear from the Neighborhood Association, and I'd like to hear legal opinion.
Yeah, I mean, I know this has been an issue before, have you, I know the planners have run into this from time to time, and there have been proposals possibly to vacate the public right-of-way up to a certain point, which will also increase taxes to the, especially for something like this where it's really permanent, what you're proposing. So why, why wouldn't the city vacate the right-of-way in part, and then your client would pay more taxes for that property?
That's essentially what we're doing anyway.
I understand.
I mean, yeah, right, exactly.
Then I think you'd have to do that all along Sussex Street, because the fences go all along there. So it's a bigger issue than my mind, so...
True. But I mean, the planners, I know that it is a problem, not just there, it's in a couple of other areas, and it's something the planners really, maybe you want them to weigh in on, but, I don't know.
Just sticking out loud, I mean, if, I, and I'm gonna have to talk to Mr. Toloza, but I think if you have a right to an area, that the successor may have the right to import that value of that right to the property, without the necessity of a vacation.
That's true, but I mean, it's liability issues, why have it done through franchise? If the city has no intention of using, why not create, have a permanent solution? It's just something to consider, that's all.
So, what are we doing here? So I'd like, I'd like for legal to maybe give me an official, legal opinion, like officially write one up for me, and I'd like to hear from the Neighborhood Association. And if we can do that before tomorrow, and we all feel good about it, then we could move forward with introduction, but if not, then maybe we table this and just, and, or withdraw it and let's discuss.
Because now, tomorrow is only a few hours...
Oh, it's tomorrow, it's, yeah, it's tomorrow.
So why don't you do it casually?
Table it, table it.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. And, and I'm sorry.
You gotta get the answers to this stuff.
I'm sorry, and I know you sent it to me, and I didn't read, so that's on me.
Introduce it, and then, and then try to get all this information to the council before second reading?
That's fine, I mean, listen, if the Neighborhood Association's on board, or legal tells me not to do it, we're gonna vote it down, but if you, if you want us to introduce it, and on the chance that we, I don't have, I don't have any problems introducing anything, because the real, the real vote matters when you, the second reading, so that's fine, we can, we can introduce it, but full warning that, you know, may vote it down.
Oh, just first reading, right?
Yeah.
Chuck, can I just ask, Chuck? Chuck, can I just ask you something?
Touchdown.
Do you represent Waldo and Newark Avenue with that building that's being, that wants to be built there?
That's the one we had the Neighborhood Meeting on.
Waldo and Newark.
Yeah, yeah, that's the one we had the Neighborhood Meeting on months ago, I believe.
That was only approved for four stories, I understand, back in 2007 or '08?
I don't recall if it was four or five.
There's some other problems there, and I think they better hold off with that development.
They have, there's an existing approval.
Yeah, back in 2007.
The one we presented is done, it's not going anywhere. So it's whatever the existing approval is, is what...
Yeah, well, that was what, eight years ago, and there's some other problems that have arisen, and if you want, give me a call tomorrow and I'll explain it to you.
Okay.
Alright.
Okay, any questions on 3D, the extension of the lease?
This is Division of Commerce, at the hook.
3H.
To lease, to amend the lease?
So this is the, to, the lease for the annex, you know, where it called for rent to start being paid February of seventeen. We're not gonna be ready by February seventeen, so all the parties have agreed to, you know, extend it out to September thirtieth of seventeen, before payments will begin. Just, because we're a little bit behind on schedule there.
Well, this one, you know what, who part of those, who has, BA, or Lord, they did a good job. At least we don't have to pay base rent, at least six months, we delayed it six months, it's a good job. Thanks to BA and Joanne, Monica, so they did a good job.
Actually, part of the delay was why Carmen needed the extension on that consultant, they're working with HUD on, you know, to make it, pulling out, you know, the property for the annex from the original section 108 loan property, it's a bit of a complicated process, and it's been delayed, but we're getting near the goal line here.
By the way, they, how far they actually finished the job now, still they talking about...
Still waiting for HUD approval.
Still waiting, HUD hasn't given its final blessing on it, which is part of the reason why Director Yandula asked for an extension on the, that consultant for the consolidated plan, the Community Development Plan.
Okay, alright, good job, keep an eye, so you can push on to six months, September?
Yes, yes, for all I should.
Okay, good, thank you.
Good job.
The grade is vacation.
Okay, 3I was touched on earlier by Jeff. 3J, it's amendment to a tax exemption, for Lafayette, family four, family phase four, voting no.
Any questions? 3K?
Okay, I have a lot of questions on 3K. And I advise the people of this city council to put this off and pull this, and not to vote on it tomorrow, not to pass it, and first of all...
It's a first reading.
Yeah, it doesn't matter, I don't care, this is wrong. Four percent of the people voted for this. The administration put out a lot of publicity, most of us didn't do, really fight against it. But I'll tell you right now, and mark my word, there's opposition coming up on this, and very strong opposition from a lot of community people throughout this city. And I'm telling you, certain people in this room are either gonna be subject, are they gonna go after you with a recall, or they're gonna go after you relentlessly. This is wrong. There's a tradition in Jersey City, the election should be in May, shouldn't change it, it'd be too confusing with other elections, the saving of four hundred thousand dollars is an out-and-out fictitious, it's not so. They're gonna have to hire more people, they're gonna have to hire more machines, and the expense goes to the county. And once the county, the people in the county find out that the expense is going to them, and not the people basically of Jersey City, it's wrong. This should not be, this is a shame that this was put on a couple of days after we had a municipal election, of which only what, twelve thousand or fifteen thousand people voted, out of a hundred and thirty-nine thousand? And you're gonna shove this down our throats, it's wrong.
If they cared, it would've came out the vote.
Why should they come out the vote? People are disgusted, people are just disgusted with this whole system and process. It's, it's wrong.
I guess I disagree, I think that, for me, it's a turnout issue, and this would move our election to being the same time as a gubernatorial election, which means that more people would win, a hundred thousand percent more people would participate in the process. And if two-year-olds can use an iPad, then we can figure out how to better design our ballots so that they're clear to understand. The fact that maybe the, the way the ballots are written now aren't clear is a totally separate issue, and that's, it's a resolvable issue. Again, if two-year-olds can use an iPad, we can figure out how to make the ballot clear. I think this is a clear win.
There's a lot of...
I remember this came, and I thought we...
Agreed that if the, if the voters voted on it, then that would, then that would give us the right and the reason and the comfort to approve it, because the voters voted on it. So I think that's what we did in the first place, right? Isn't that what we did, that's why we went out, right? Okay.
Four percent of the people is not, are not the voters.
They should've came out the vote.
It was not publicized, most people, you know, you know, you're talking about fifty percent almost, and fifty percent was fifty-fifty.
I'm shocked, because you're the person that convinced me over a year ago that this was the right way to go.
Until I found out... One at a time, one at a time. Yeah, because... You want to be campaigning in a runoff in November, but around Thanksgiving and Christmas?
All that was on the table a year ago, and we discussed this, and you said it was the right way to go.
In the beginning, until I found out, no, no, no. I said in the beginning, I thought it probably was a good idea.
Because we had to discuss you in your office about it, and you were the one that convinced me it was the right way to go. Now it's not the right way to go.
No, Fran.
No, come on, it is, come on.
Until you, until you analyzed the whole thing, we never talked about a runoff, and I never realized...
This has nothing to do with a runoff.
Yes, it does, because if the election's in November, let's say you and I are running in Hark, and the two top people have to run again, now you got to campaign around Thanksgiving, around Christmas, that's our holiday.
I had to do that in 2012, I didn't know what you're talking about.
Well, there was no runoff. You're talking about... There was no runoff. And I was also 2011, it was November. And also, there is, it's, four percent of the people came out. If fifty percent of the people came out, out of the hundred and thirty-nine thousand people that are registered, I'd say, fine, that's what the people want, the hell with it. But that's not what happened.
They didn't want to come out, so I put it, their vote was...
Okay, one at a time, one at a time. Counselor's question one.
They didn't come out, what do you want us to do?
Last time you agreed.
You said whatever the people said.
That's what you said.
Yeah, but four percent came out, it's not...
You can't force people to come out, too.
Alright, I'm just telling you. It's a ballot. It's opposition.
It's mail to all registered voters, the question is...
Also, I don't think the city has the authority to change this. Somebody said today, the governor has to approve this, number one. And secondly, is it legal for this city council to extend our term six months? That's another legal issue. Uh, I think we have to go to an outside lawyer on this. Nothing against you, Chuck.
Let me, let me, let me weigh in with my thoughts on this. So Hoboken effectuated the same change in 2010, I think it was? So apparently, the state legislature passed legislation back in 2009. Back then, despite the criticism, now, back then, people were cheering for then-councilman Fulop when he called for the change in the election to, to move it from May to November. Folks were cheering for him across, across the city, the Jersey Journal endorsed it, and then more recently, the Star-Ledger endorsed it as well. I intend to, it's not, it's my point.
Be heard, okay?
For me, for me, the issue, as Candace is, if I can just, I want to just articulate my arguments just as you did. So, just as Candace already articulated, it is indisputable that turnout is considerably higher in November. And the same arguments, the same arguments about a confusing ballot were made about the Board of Education election, and you would be right, because on the first time that it was done, it was confusing. And then they, somebody had the sense to sit down with the clerk, the county Board of Elections, and they cleaned up the ballot and fixed it, and it's been smooth sailing ever since, with great turnout. I mean, there's always a drop-off from the top of the ballot down to the bottom of the ballot, but the, the drop-offs were there as well, and for Board of Election, and yet we still see, still see higher, higher turnouts for the Board of Elections than we ever saw before in an April election for the Board of Education. I, I, as, as someone who just wants to see voter participation increase, I think we should do everything we can to do, make it possible for more voters to participate in the process.
Lando, the word was November, more people come out, this was one of the worst elections this city's ever had. And you're talking about people came out for the Board of Education? There were thirty-two thousand students in public schools, and there's probably another eighteen thousand in charter schools. How many parents came out to vote? How many parents?
It was like eighteen hundred votes to win, in a city of two-hundred-and-fifty thousand.
Thing going on. Ours would be, just, the, okay, so you can say the county executive is a huge thing, no offense to the county executive position, but when it happens on a gubernatorial, hold on, I'm still talking. When it happens on a gubernatorial election, hands down, look at, presidential election's gonna get the most votes in November, so on years when we have a presidential, the second most is gonna be years when we have a gubernatorial. This will move ours to the years when we have a gubernatorial. You cannot say, because it is a fact, that voter participation will increase. It's like, may not like it, but it's still a fact.
Well, if they didn't come out to vote for the county executive, basically the school board election and this, I...
Well, listen... Again, no offense to county executive, but if they didn't come out for the county executive election, I completely, no, why? Like, it's just not the, it doesn't get the, doesn't have the flash that governor selection has.
You know what, actually, I agree with a lot of things with Councilman Rich Bojano, and some parties I disagree. I agree with a lot of things, it was Candace, it was Mr. Emery, I disagree with that. But we have to be understand this way, couple of things. Board turnout is a very important part of the election, location about it. You know, but actually, if you look at it, we have to look at it this way. The traditional Jersey City major council election can be five, six, ten mayor candidate. We can have maximum, how many was it, Brexham Lowes, mayors, how many, ten?
Nineteen eighty-nine, ten people.
Ten people, yeah, yeah, twelve, can be. So now it's a problem, it's in November, if you're ten, you can, you get there like a ten percent of voters, or fifteen percent, you can be elected mayor. In other words, people participating in voting, eighty-five percent don't like Candace towards me as a mayor of Jersey City, but can be a mayor, because you got more to vote. So now...
This doesn't eliminate the runoff.
No, 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 mayor already said, that make me very upset. When we discussed this one first place, he said, listen, we're gonna move to election to May, November, and at the time, actually, city council, at the time I asked them, how about the runoff? Nobody showed to, they have no transparency, they not talk about any things about the runoff. They just passed a city council, put you, referendum first, you know, in the question, put the referendum now. After election is over, mayor say that I tried to eliminate the runoff.
That's for next year's ballot, right?
That's what I'm saying, now.
So they're two separate votes, and I'm not saying whether I agree with eliminating the runoff or not, this is not eliminating the runoff.
Yes, I understand, but now... Yes, I understand. But now, you know, we knows how the city council, you know.
With all due respect, you don't know.
Right, we don't know.
But now, listen to me. I hope not. I hope not. But now, 85%, 85%. Now, listen, I agree with you. 85%, 85% people say, I don't want him to be a mayor because he got 15 majority, he be mayor. Now, if we, I don't know, I cannot read their mind, but if this city council say no for runoff, then that's the way case gonna happen the way I said. If the city council said, no, no, we're gonna be runoff, then November, whether the board turnout, really critical issue, can be what is so-called freeze, you know, and Thanksgiving, Christmas, holiday shopping. So board turnout gonna be very, very low. You can be a councilman by couple of the board. Traditionally, maybe need a couple of thousand, but you know, so we have some issue, but now what I'm saying is that.
So are runoffs in the summer, when people are on summer vacation in June. Come on, they're in June.
Thirty days you have to do it.
Yeah, the summer, June.
That's not the summer.
Some are still, some are still better than freezing, snowing weather can be a fact. So, you know, I wish, I wish we only wanted the time, when we discuss, you know, February, if mayor say, listen, move to that, we limited the runoff, then maybe this council take different actions. But actually, without follow, no explanation, before explanation, he just pushing now. But Councilman Rich Bojano, we have to understand, you know, we have to be understand, one thing is that general election, party election, but they have a primary, so they don't require a general election, require runoff. But City of Jersey, our election have no primary election. That's why we set up the actual runoff, to make sure the majority to vote. So now, we should look at it, put your first question in the ballot, the majority people prove it. We like or not, we like or not, we have to live with that, but thank God, was a non-binding. So we, actually, this is council, have one more chance to decide we're gonna move or not. Is that right?
Yes, not binding. We could, if we want to not follow the rules.
This is a non-binding referendum, was it? So still, this council can be decide.
Right, that's my question. If it doesn't pass, if it does not pass.
Could this ordinance be considered again?
That's what you're asking? We can consider any ordinance again.
No, if we say no, this ordinance, then we go back to election to May, or what we have to, because it's non-binding.
The election is still in May right now.
I mean, 2017.
No, it's currently still in May.
Always in May unless it changes.
But that's what I'm saying, if we say no, this ordinance, what happens?
It stays in May.
It stays in May. That's what I'm saying. So I hope, still, even though we put your referendum for the, as we question one for the move to election in May to November, because there was a non-binding question was. So still, this council have one more chance, the final, we can make a decision to.
Yes, we can pat them on the head and say, no, we know better than the public.
Right, this is, this is non-binding.
We have opportunity still. One more chance to we have this council, we gonna move to November or not? This is what it means.
So I understand, correct me on that. You're saying, let's do the question again next year. The same exact question. It will pass.
It'll pass with flying colors because it's a presidential year. There'll be much higher turnout in November, which means it'll definitely better. Yeah, whatever, I'm fine with either one.
Okay, no, we haven't seen.
Move on. Okay, second reading. Any questions on anything related to second reading?
So, uh, if this council say no to this ordinance, how may election of this?
In May.
If this is voted down, the elections will remain in May, yes.
Okay, everybody heard there, right? Right, I understand.
You're sure you're touching to pass it because you're being told to pass it. Let's be honest.
Okay, don't insult us. You flip-flopped, okay? So you wanna say things like that, Rich? I will tell you, you flip-flopped. You were on the record in the Jersey Journal saying this is a great idea, and then when other people came to you and said this is a full ploy, you flip-flopped on it in the same day practically.
I did, and I found the app, and nobody else even brought up that the governor.
Nobody's been more consistent on this than the people who are voting for this, than you.
I can run for mayor.
The ramifications of moving the election.
Yo, I remember the words.
This whole thing is based on, somebody said, well, if he doesn't get the nomination for governor, he can run for mayor. That's where the objections are coming from.
Yeah.
I find it.
Yes. People voted on it. That's the objection.
Any questions on second readings?
Second readings.
He didn't get a word in.
Folks.
But we had talked about an ordinance for the pilot program for the food trucks going over to the east side of Hudson Street, over by York Street. But it's not on this agenda. Is there any way we could, you know, no, no, it's not on the agenda.
It's not in here.
So is there where we can put this on, you know, for tomorrow?
Let me find out what happened to it. So you didn't, no one, you didn't.
It wasn't at the agenda meeting when we met.
Was it?
It was not at the agenda meeting.
I don't remember what happened to it.
It wasn't even discussed.
It was done. No, it was done. It was very easy. No, it was.
Yep. Okay, can we get the law department and clerk's office to get that available to, for first, you wanna just explain that so that they, those who are voting on it can?
It's, we've, we've, we've discussed it. Every, police is on board, public, the parking is on board. Um, I don't know, all the people. Everybody, everybody, anybody is on board. And it's, it's currently no parking, so, and they're very wide streets, and it's Sussex, Grand and York. The end of Sussex, Grand and York, east of Hudson, there's currently no parking. There's absolutely no reason why we can't turn it into food truck parking.
Didn't make it to the agenda. And it wasn't discussed. So you'll make sure it gets on there for tomorrow? Can you email it to the entire council or to Margaret, and she'll make sure it gets to the council? Okay. Anything else, anything on second reading?
In between to get stuff like that done. Now, you're talking about tomorrow to have that done. I just hope it's there.
It's pretty easy, though. I thought traffic engineering had.
Tomorrow's the meeting.
I know there was.
And that's, that's only my concern about having the meeting tomorrow. I mean, if it's something that can be, that can be done for the next meeting, which would be the 24, just hear me out one second, council. For the 24th, we still have another meeting on December 16th, so it can be passed before the end of the year.
I just think that would maybe say this, we've been down this road, and they've been saying, yeah, somebody didn't do, Anna Joy was very, you know, involved in it. And then when it left her hand, it just, you know, I just think that if we keep on prolonging it, we're gonna wind up in January.
Well, I know traffic engineering, I was working on it, but I saw a draft of it in my email, so I don't know what happened to it. I just assumed that it made it to the city clerk. So, you know, it comes out of traffic engineering, so let me find out.
Who will be?
I'll find out.
Okay. Someone be responsible for it, that's all.
I will be responsible.
Okay, very good.
At 6 o'clock. That's, that's my concern.
Okay, Councilperson Coleman said, if you got it, folks, just to sum up, if you have it, let's get it on the agenda. If you can't find it, then, then we've got a problem. Okay.
4C.
Yes.
Yes, sir. This is the second reading on the cruel payouts, special emergency notes, up to $8 million.
Yes. My question is very simple. 2014.
Councilman Steve Fulop actually against issue bond to pay all those items. And 2012.
13?
13, was it right?
2012.
2012? He said no. Almost he said no to issue emergency, uh, uh, the special note issue. Why he said no as a, when he was councilman Steve Fulop? Why he would say no?
Maybe he didn't want to, you know, he didn't want to kick the can down the road, so to speak, you know, putting the debt on the books.
If I can, if I can, I was there on that council. I voted the same as Councilman Fulop. So there was a one-time revenue, and I forget, it was a land sale. And at the time, it was an unexpected land sale, I think, and he's, and Steve, Councilman Fulop at the time, proposed a one-time revenue to cover a one-time expense, when the one-time revenue was added to the budget at the time. And so in 2012, that's, I believe what the argument was at that time, if you.
So at the time, I remember that Councilman Steve Fulop asked those kind of, you know, expenses should be in the budget.
So, and they used to be in the budget.
Right. But now he's the mayor. Why he not put those item in the budget?
Well, if you want it in the budget, the council most certainly could, has that option. If we were to put it in the budget, we would have to either have an offsetting revenue, so there would be no tax increase, or we would have, or we have to raise property taxes. This way, the legislature allows municipalities, you know, to pay this off over five years, the special emergency notes. You're paying five equal installments. Since we started doing this in 2010, except for year 2012, we've been paying them off, and the actual, you know, we're asking for $8 million. And if you factor in what we've done in the past couple of years since 2010, the month, the annual installments come up to about $8 million. So if you look at it in a certain way, you're actually are paying off those liabilities in the budget. You're paying $8 million towards, towards these payouts. So now we're just splitting, you know, we're splitting them off now over five years.
I just wanna make one, what I think is correct. If I can just make one, because I correct one thing. So there was, I think, three, three choices there. It's either you raise revenues to cover the increased expense, you reduce expenses to cover the 8 million, or what was the third one?
Raise taxes.
Or raise taxes.
Right, so now, 2014, we actually collect revenue wise, $16 million more than what we expected, but we spent more last year. So even though this city council passed 515, 515 million dollars by end of day, this, our total budget 2014, 545 some million dollars, include $16 million actually excess revenue will come in. As you say, so far, so far, emergency note, we have the balance of today, 2015, 25 billion dollars. Today, if we issue another $8 million, it will be our, our emergency note, whatever is a pay balance, will be 33 million dollars. But now, as you say, last year, we pay off almost $8 million every year. So then, this year, why have to issue bond if we able to pay $8 million off?
We're paying that $8 million because we're paying installments back to 2010. So we're, this year's budget includes the payouts from 2010. That was the first year we started this program. So, you know, we're trying to catch up, we're trying to catch up to the 200 police and fire and civilians that retired in 2010 when the governor changed, changed the pension and healthcare laws. We had a mass exodus. You know, we had $21 million in payouts over two and a half years that we could not sustain in the budget. So we took advantage of this. Prior to that, the number was budgeted in, in the operating budget. There was a line item in there covering it. We wouldn't, we didn't have these notes as available to us. It was funded. But until we can kinda catch up to, you know, pay down the 2010, 2011 mass exodus, it's really not, you know, we're not capable of paying within the operating budget until we get the pass paid off. Now, you know, you keep it, you keep referencing the surplus. Well, the more surplus you use in the budget, means the following year, you have to replace it. If I use it all in the budget, how am I making up for it in next year's budget? We have to be fiduciary responsible here to be, to manage our budget over multiple years, not just one year. So if you wanna use the extra $8 million surplus, well, the next year, which means we'd be $33 million on the budget, where's that $33 million of revenue for next year's budget? It's gonna come from the taxpayers' pockets. So, so we have to be smart here in how we manage this over multiple years.
Actually, it's not smart, because when we issue note, we gotta pay interest, so 2% or 1%, we are paid interest. So sounds like, actually, what I see there is so, if we have to be increase tax this year, $8 million, then mayor cannot go out and say, I'll load the tax 2%. But because we put $8 million in the budget, now he able to say, I load the 2% tax. But actually, it's not, because this item is supposed in the budget, but he didn't put it in, so he able to say, I load the tax. But if we put in this one, $8 million in the budget, then what do you have to say?
You vote in the budget?
Yes.
You voted, you approved the budget?
Yes, we approved the budget. That's what I'm saying.
Responsible for the budget that was voted on by everyone and approved by everyone in the council. We all have that opportunity to contemplate and to make proposed changes. You can say at the time of the budget approval, I motion to amend the budget to include $8 million in this line and offsetting revenues in this line, whatever. And you have that option, but you, you voted for it, as we all did.
But no, council president.
So it's a little bit disingenuous to say now, but you did it last year, and you voted against it.
Yes.
So you were consistent then.
Yes, listen.
Yeah.
The way you say sounds good is right, but actually it's wrong. Let me tell you. At the budget time, this one, what are they called? They say that, actually, emergency. So in other words, they are all, they get notice, 2014 or 2015, when you talk about it all the time. Now, we call emergency note to be issued. How the hell, as any councilman in this room knows that we're gonna have a short of 7 or 8 million dollars?
During the budget process, I did make the council aware that we would be coming to the council with this request. We, you know, there's a line of budget, and I said, it's not funded in the budget. We'll be coming to you at the end of the year to fund those payouts again like we did the year before and the year before that. So, I mean, I was upfront about that all along the process.
So I missed that?
Yes, sir. And you don't miss much. I don't know how you missed that one.
I know you will prepare for that. All right, but anyhow.
Misunderstanding.
Say, so next year, instead tell us that, then you should be not say emergency.
Well, that's, that's the statutory name of it. It's called special emergency note. I mean, I didn't name it, but.
We, next year, we gonna have another $8 million or $7 million.
Hopefully less.
Yeah. But we should note again. So we're gonna make sure that we put in the budget, right? All right. All right, okay.
Any other questions on the second reading?
No.
No questions on the petition communications or, there's no officer communications. Reporter directors, I'm gonna go right to resolutions. 10A is a resolution authorizing the calendar year 2015 appropriation transfers. 10B is a resolution certifying the compliance with NJSA 48-5-4 requiring governing body of every local unit to have made an annual audit of books, accounts, and financial transactions. That's what you guys just signed tonight, and I'm sorry you had to sign it twice. We had a typo in the year. But that's the affidavit that it goes along with that resolution. 10C is a resolution fixing the dates and times for the caucuses and regular meetings of the municipal council for 2016.
But you know, that's what I mean. The orders we sign for the order, right? BA, can I ask this one? Because we must have to read, these council members have to read that page 333, right?
I don't have it in front of me. I haven't memorized it yet. I worked on it though.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes, because, you know, when I sign the paper, they say, you read it, so I sign it, as do the rest of the people.
Go ahead, council.
So now, the other issue is that the federal grants fund, grant receivable, we have $56 million balance over the year. You know, and the operation reserve, there's $48 million. So it's almost how many million dollars? Almost $8 million difference, is that right?
People must be killing grants reverse, so. We have to lay out money in most counts, most grants, and then our, you know, the department responsible for the grant. We have to lay out money in most counts, most grants, and then our, you know, the, the department responsible for the grant, submits their final financial reports, it gets reimbursed. You know, uh, our, our budget office is currently working with the various departments in closing out the books and making sure they've done their proper required, uh, required reporting and got all the funding back in place. They're, they're working on closing out some of those accounts, that's one of the recommendations from the auditor.
And the other one is that the, the bond, you know, is the city council authorized but not issued is fifty-six million dollars for two thousand, December thirty-one, two thousand fourteen. And the two thousand thirteen, fifty-four million dollars, city council actually proved the bond not issued. So those kind of dollars, when you locate it, our balance this issue looks terrible, so what is your role gonna be? Okay, here this one.
Counselor President.
Do any of the rest of us have that there, the questions that is?
Those are the ones given up in this one.
Yeah, but isn't that supposed to be done at a private meeting, there's no rest of the?
Yes.
Oh, the certification, but you signed it already, right?
Yes, but I have to ask that. This is the resolution, yes, yes, yes. So now, I mean, that, uh, what is your plan to do this one, just two items?
Well, a couple things. One, we are working on identifying those ordinances where there are bonds authorized but not issued. See if the projects are still, uh, open. If they're not, then we can close them out. If there's some minor funding that needs to, to close them out, we will probably use capital surplus to close them out. And if need be, then the last action is to then issue the bonds for the projects in question. But this, it's, it's being addressed, councilman. Yes, you know, you know, budget office is actually on that, that we, we. Yes, they definitely working, I, I assure you, they, that is an active project right now.
So we can see some.
That'll go, that'll definitely be down next year, both the grant side and the capital side, that'll be much less next year. Hold me to it, councilman, I, yeah.
Yeah. We've discussed this.
Okay. He's hurting, but he's doing okay.
We miss you, Robert.
Everything went well.
Will he be here Wednesday?
He will not. No one's gonna be here Wednesday, actually. See, I'm trying to stay on top of my game. Okay, actually, I, yeah, ten C is the resolution fixing the dates and times for the caucuses and regular meetings of the municipal council for, for the year twenty sixteen.
But then what is, I have some issues there, ten C. My concern is that, you know, that, uh, if you see they, July and August, we're gonna have only one council meeting. Always, but in the middle of the month. You know, can we move this one like all of the months or end of the months? So when the people go to vacation, their plan will fully, middle of the months, you know, stop somewhere, you know what I'm saying? Can we move to?
You wanna go away a whole month straight.
So all of the months or end of the month? Not the personal request, if we see increase to this, you know, you know, you can see that, because we gonna have. No, no, no.
So councilman, you're proposing to change the July and August dates to a later date in each month.
So because, you know, when I say June, last council meeting is June twenty-nine. So, moved it to July to end of the week, and August to the end of the week, you know, then, last meeting is August, with the September meeting actually three weeks away, so more.
Does that work for everyone?
I don't care, whatever.
Thank you very much.
It does delay vendor payments. It does delay vendor payments, so you're gonna have.
Yeah, so.
Three week lag and then a four week lag, and here it's just a two week and a four week, so, you know.
Yeah, so just when we do months, not the months.
Weeks.
Try and help out the small businessman in the city, get their payment timeline.
Oh, no, their vendors not small business, because usually, yes, because they purchase from the local vendors, but they.
Duck and hardware, that's exactly what I was thinking, duck and hardware.
Each of those months because of the vacation.
Are you saying just moving back?
Different dates, so come up some idea.
So we get it for the whole month.
What, what days are we, what, what days are you looking at, though?
No, I don't know.
He's looking at, um, July, for, for the caucus, it would be July twenty-fifth ISO, two weeks later, fourteen days. And then for the meeting in July, it will be July twenty-seventh.
Yeah, that makes sense.
That's my project, on July twenty-seventh. That's what I'm saying, I mean.
Although he's versus the national holiday, she'll be.
I say we keep it as is and move on.
No, without discussion?
I didn't say it's not open for discussion, I just, did Robert go over these meet, meeting dates with you guys?
He said he discussed it in the last caucus. Was that true, I, I wasn't there.
I wasn't there.
Robert is the one who did it, but.
He didn't discuss it, no. No, it didn't happen.
Sean did not.
It didn't happen.
Okay, so, so my request is gonna be that we, there's not a rush to do this, right? We just have to do it before the end of the year.
Right, we can put it off.
Everybody take a look at the calendar, come back with any dates that you think are, or let, let Margaret know, and Sean. Let Margaret know, and Margaret will compile it all and get it to Sean.
Just for the month of July and August only, don't, don't let's mess with that whole calendar.
July and August.
So do you wanna, do you wanna withdraw it for, for the next, until the next meeting?
Let's withdraw it.
Yeah. Alright.
Okay, we're withdrawing it. Make sure Margaret gets her.
Ten C. Withdrawn it because of the two summer months withdrawn. Ten D is a resolution appointing Mayor Marie A. Viola as custodian for the division of accounts control to replace Irene Bremer. Uh, ten E is a resolution waiving the twenty-day waiting period otherwise required to effectuate city ordinance fifteen one forty-nine and ordinance of the city of Jersey City and county of Hudson, New Jersey, providing for a special emergency appropriation, eight million for the payment of contractually required severance liabilities resulting from the retirement of city employees. Ten F is a resolution authorizing the business administrator to execute a discharge of mortgage affecting sixty-eight Graham Street. Ten G is a resolution authorizing the business administrator to execute a discharge of mortgage affecting one eleven Rutgers Avenue. Ten H is a resolution authorizing the business administrator to execute a discharge of mortgage affecting seventy-two Wegman Parkway. Ten I is a resolution authorizing the business administrator to execute a discharge of mortgage affecting one seventy-eight Wilkinson Avenue. Ten J was touched on earlier. Ten K, cancellation of twenty fifteen real estate taxes on block six, sixteen oh two, lot one point oh one, uh, also known as seventy, seventy-one North Street due to a chapter four forty-one tax abatement. Ten L is a resolution authorizing closing of a municipal streets, Storms Avenue from Bergen Avenue to Monticello Avenue and Nevin Street, beginning seven AM and ending five PM Thursday, November twenty-sixth, God bless you, at the request of the Mo, Mo Hair Foundation for the Thanksgiving Day Feed. Ten M is a resolution providing for the financing of special emergency appropriation of the city of Jersey City in the county of Hudson, New Jersey, by issu, the issuance of special emergency notes of the city. Ten N is a resolution authorizing the city of Jersey City to accept funds from the New Jersey Department of Law, Public Safety, Division, Division of Criminal Justice on behalf of the Police Department to purchase body armor, twenty fifteen body armor replacement fund. Ten O is a resolution authorizing the city of Jersey City to apply for funds from, from the New Jersey Department of Law and Public Safety, Division of Highway Traffic Safety Drunk Driving Enforcement Fund, fiscal year twenty fifteen. Ten P is a resolution authorizing the settlement of lawsuit Pete Pla, Platanetton, uh, versus the city of Jersey City. Ten Q and ten R are being withdrawn. Um, you will receive an email by council president. Ten S and ten T was touched on earlier.
Which one is withdrawn?
Ten Q and R, Q and R.
Q and R, withdrawn.
Any reason?
Just wasn't supposed to be on the agenda.
Wasn't supposed to make the agenda.
Right, too early.
Ten S and T were touched on earlier. Ten U is a resolution authorizing award of a contract to J and A Alexander, Inc. for the emergency paving of two locations for Department Administration, Division of Architecture, Engineering, Traffic, and Transportation. Ten V was touched on earlier. WX was touched on earlier. Ten Y is a resolution authorizing contract to Lexus Nexus, Division of RE, also Inc. to provide online legal research services for the Jersey Law Department. Ten Z was touched on earlier. Ten Z one, resolution amending professional service agreement to the firm of Roch Elcher LLC to represent the police officer Thomas Johnson and Clyde Banks in the matter of Francis Defazio and Shaniza, Defazio versus the city of Jersey City.
Uh, can I ask the ten Y, question? Join.
Ten Y. And the we're gonna city council gonna make contract is October first, two thousand fifteen to two thousand eighteen. But our this council, Tom, finished two thousand seventeen. So actually, I feel uncomfortable that we have a contract three years or something without our Tom.
Okay.
Tom the contractor.
Oh, no, that's fine. Yeah, yeah, the city goes on. It does, with or without us. Yes, leases.
No, he doesn't, he doesn't, he doesn't, in fairness.
Price for end of the three years, you know, fifty-three thousand.
You couldn't approve an agreement now that would begin after your term ended. But you can certainly approve an agreement now that extends beyond your term, that's fine. So long as there, it's not longer than the statute allows.
Yeah, I understand, but I feel like I'm.
Ninety-nine year, something, you know.
Alright, let's go.
Franchiseal advances.
Ten Z two, resolution authorizing professional service agreement with Riley and Riley to represent the police officer Ray Weber in the matter of Stefan Mitchell versus the city of Jersey City. Ten Z three is a resolution authorizing the city of Jersey City to join as a am, am, amicus? Amicus, friend of the court in opposition to litigation filed by various Western and coal-producing states challenging the validity of the Clean Power Plan issued by the United States Environmental Protection Agency at the urging of the president. No. Ten Z four, a resolution supporting the fight for fifteen, fifteen dollar movement, calling for a statewide minimum wage of fifteen dollars an hour for work performed in the state of New Jersey and strengthening the right of workers to organize for a real living wage.
If I can just say very briefly, sir, um, this is a, just a resolution urging the state, so it's not adopting it for the city of Jersey City. Um, this, there's been movement in New York City, in Seattle, and, um, in other places throughout the country. I mean, the idea that our minimum wage, while we've increased it at what, eight sixty-five an hour, I think it is, and, uh, if you work that out over a forty-hour work week, um, you're, you're person who's living on a forty-hour work week at, at minimum wage is far below poverty level, um, wages. So, uh, the fight for fifteen is fighting to provide kind of a dignity, dignity and a living wage for people, uh, across the spectrum. Yep.
I agree with you a hundred percent.
We agree?
I support, but you're wrong, now listen to me. I really support increase in minimum wage of fifteen dollars. But I think we need our city council, we move a step ahead, we should put in one of the, another small paragraph, the increase of the, uh, minimum wage, eight thirty-eight to fifteen dollars, how much we increase?
Seven dollars an hour.
On six thirty-five, right?
Yeah.
That increase six thirty-five, we should be ask the states and the federal, they should not charge to payroll tax. So we can maximize that increase of the minimum to benefit to employee who worked under the, you know, you know, minimum age, I mean that, those kind of age level. Miniature increase, minimum wage, eight thirty-eight to fifteen dollars, this guy have to pay, because they pay all the tax, workers pay the social statistics based on percentage of the payroll. So even though we increase six dollar thirty-five cents more per hour, actually, government take up most dollar, actually benefit to tax, I mean, the employee, maybe three, four dollars. You know, it's very minimum, even though we increase six dollar thirty-five cents per hour. So somehow, we step forth, we should, we test that the states and the federal, they should rewaive that, payroll tax, something, so maximize the benefit, increase the minimum to the employee who worked at the very minimum. So, we should put you one paragraph to we care about the more people living with fifteen dollars an hour, really, you know what I'm saying? Or, or is, I, I same feeling is that increase in minimum, the government to get more benefit out of the increase in minimum than actual employees working the field. They should overtime to give to maximize their benefit to them, increase.
Are you saying that we should tell the federal and the state government that they shouldn't take out taxes on these employees?
No, I understand.
No.
Is that what you're saying? No?
No, okay, just a resolution, we have more authorization to set up the state minimum. But at least, we try to maximize the minimum wage increase to benefit to the employee. The one way we do that, employer, they increase a six dollar, six dollar thirty-five cents one hour, they're gonna pay. But actually, you know what, I got complaint, this is good to know. Guy who worked at their place, it's like a city hall, seven years, he now works seven years in the retail, so he make a fifteen dollars. The guy gonna be working next year maybe, if we change, I don't know how they gonna change, fifteen dollars. So now, employer, the guy who worked, I worked seven years, now I make fifteen dollars. By guy just walk in the stores, have to pay fifteen dollars, so now employer have to increase guy who worked seven years from fifteen dollars to twenty dollars. The minimum wage actually not impact only just one person, actually impact every employee in the working place. So we have to be understand that part of it.
So, so this resolution, a couple like payroll taxes?
Um, it just talks about, there's the symbolic gesture of the, I mean, the idea of increasing the minimum wage really also symbolically represents whether we, 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 we believe in the idea that every person who puts in a fair day's work gets a fair day's pay. The, the intricacies of payroll taxes, um, could certainly, we could, we could certainly talk to our legislators about that and contemplate those issues another time. But it takes a little bit of the gusto out of the idea of, let's fight for the increase in minimum.
People go and put machines into order when you walk in the store, you're hurting more people.
Well, it started, it started in New York City with the fast food industry and, um, workers over there organizing to fight for an increase in minimum wage. And, um, started to organize finally at the fast food chains and so forth, and beginning to, to contemplate forming unions. Um, and for too long, we've moved backwards in this country with, uh, workers being able to organize and, um, fight for their.
So that's why they're gonna be lose, losing job, half a million job gonna be disappeared.
Well, you know what, minimum wage hasn't kept up with the pace of inflation. When it was put in in the sixties, we could at least bring it to what it was.
But I mean, you know what I'm saying, I agree with you, we support it, but if you put you one more, it's a resolution. Well, you know, just once a city of Jersey council, should eliminate their, their payroll tax.
Alright. You're welcome to do whatever you want, I, I don't, won't necessarily support it, I saw you.
You support it.
Ten Z five is a resolution ratifying emergency contract award to Whitson's Food Service, to provide frozen cooked meals for Meals on Wheels program on a month-to-month basis, not to exceed five months for the Department of Health and Human Services, Division of Senior Nutrition. Ten Z six is a resolution ratifying emergency contract with new way concessions to provide cooked meals for senior concrete, site, concrete site nutrition pro, excuse me, program on a month-to-month basis, not to exceed five months for the Department of Health and Human Services, Division of Senior Nutrition. Ten Z seven is a resolution amending professional service agreement to attorneys at law in the state of New Jersey to air.
Rahat Chata.
Thank you. To serve as public defender in the Jersey City Municipal Court for calendar year twenty fifteen. Ten Z eight is a resolution authorizing execution of a mortgage subordination agreement affecting the property known as three ninety-four dash three ninety-six Halliday Street. None on your printed agenda are the late items that were, um, placed in front of you at the beginning of the meeting. Ten Z nine is a resolution authorizing a refund slash credit of twenty-one thousand four hundred thirty-seven dollars and six cents and a reduction in assessment to settle a tax appeal filed by Black Bear Hollow LLC. Um, ten Z ten is going to be a resolution expressing the opposition to the Cross Harbor Freight programs, preferred alternatives and use of Greenville Yards as their west of Hudson Brail termini.
Sorry, can I just ask Councilor Gudzinski to?
I guess everybody is aware of this, and I know a lot of people in the meeting, when they were, uh, in the booth center, to discuss this now, when they were. meeting, when they, when the committee sent it, uh, to discuss this matter, when they were taking public comments in a couple of the other meetings we had, but the readers' digest, the readers' digest version of this is that the, the Port Authority is looking to alleviate the horrendous traffic conditions in the Cross Bronx Expressway by building a tunnel and driving an extra twenty to thirty efficient trains through South Greenville every single day, which would include tremendous amount of noise, vibration, fumes from diesel engines, health problems, so we're gonna solve one problem and remove it from this Cross Bronx Express when we bring it over here to South Greenville, and affect the health of the Jersey City people who are gonna have it.
In the whole Port Authority fashion.
Right, so that's what the opposition is...
Doing stuff in New York, except in New Jersey.
That's ten Z ten, you just...
Yeah, it's not on your printed agenda. Those were the two...
Those are the last that we gave.
The last two, yeah, and they're in legal size, cops.
Do we have ways of stopping it legally?
Can we stop?
We don't have authority over the Port Authority, so...
Unless we're able to change Port Authority control with the right someone entrant in.
Okay. And, uh, last, I'm sorry. And the, the last resolution is a ceremonial resolution, it's a resolution recognizing and welcoming Mayor, excuse me if I put you this name, Mayor Anh Boong Young?
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay. Of New, New Abi City?
I'm sorry? Ujambu.
Ujambu, see, I, that's, that's my pronunciation, on the visit to the City of Jersey City.
Tomorrow, which is tomorrow. Yeah, yeah, so, that, uh, the City of Ujambu, they actually donating extra amount of ninety-two thousand dollars to the Korean War veterans of Hudson County to be furnished, repaired Korean War veterans, was a very good gesture, was that, and also, their city continue have relation with Jersey City, so when they have some kind of maintenance issue, come out, they willing to help us, you know, and also, I had a meeting with the mayor today, he willing to build up the same size, same shape, same things like, uh, monument we have in their city, you know, to like, build up the friendship with Korean War veterans, because that actually city was a military city, was a, one times, one in thirty thousand American soldiers located that city, so it's a good city, so their mayor coming tomorrow, six o'clock, he's gonna make a speech, and the city council, we're gonna...
We'll go to a meeting?
Yeah, tomorrow meeting.
That's great.
Yes, you can hug him, you can thank it to him, you can do whatever you want, you know, you're free to do it.
The mayor be presenting gift, folks, will the mayor be presenting gifts to the...
Yes, the mayor gonna be...
Our mayor?
Yeah, our mayor, City of Jersey has no gift, but City of Jersey has some kind of key, you know, city keys, you know, so they'll present, and the city council, maybe, we don't nothing, but I think, we print that the resolution, you know what I'm saying, make a nice gesture, you know, that's all. They're gonna stay till, oh, November eleventh.
Tomorrow's the Marine Corps birthday, maybe we can, you know, say something.
Let's have a cake.
So, November eleventh, they, they kind of, they have a service hold at their monument, so I think if anybody available to show up, kind of clock, you know what I'm saying? It's gonna be...
Motion.
Korean War Veterans Monument, do they?
Motion.
Um, one thing, I just wanted to mention for this, uh, we lost somebody, um, special in the arts community, Meredith Lippman, um, from, she's county cultural affairs.
Oh.
Yes.
Who, who's that?
So, condolences to reach out to her family, yeah.
Our condolences. Okay, I, actually, I have a motion to adjourn at seven fifty-one PM by Councilperson Waterman, seconded by Councilperson Coleman, on the motion by acclamation, say aye, we are out of here, goodnight, at seven fifty-one PM.
Frank, Frank.